Yes, Mr. Kennedy. Just to say before we get started, as you'll all be aware, Mr. Westerway is indisposed.
Yes.
Joining on live stream and thus able to communicate with his leader, Mr. Booth. Those arrangements were all foreshadowed in email correspondence last night and
They were.
This morning, which you will all have seen. So this is, as it were, a conventional hearing on live stream, not a high merit hearing.
Exactly. I'm grateful.
Yes.
It's apparent that my lords have the representation, I'm not going to who.
Yes, indeed.
Well upon that. There is a little bit of adjustment to the authorities bundle before I proceed any further. So that my lords will have, I hope, in front of them each a small sheaf of authorities.
Yeah.
It's not, nothing very dramatic really. But there are two, insofar as the authorities bundle is concerned, there is an adjustment in respect of the case of Horner, which is at tab seven.
Oh, yes.
The case report which we put in is from the JPL, it's not very good, but the environmental law report
Is better.
Is better, so that's been supplied courtesy of Mr. Booth.
Thank you very much for that, we'll put that in there.
We've also just supplied the Court of Appeal judgment in Horner.
Oh, yes.
To which glancing reference will be made.
All right, so that's the, that's seven.
So that could perhaps live in seven as well.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
There is an additional authority, Hopkins Homes, in the Court of Appeal.
Yes.
Which I propose we just keep at the front of the authorities bundle.
You don't want to make that nine?
You can make that nine.
Why don't we do that?
Let's make that nine.
Put a post-it on it and make it nine.
And lastly, I think, I may be wrong, maybe it's not lastly, but there is an NPPF, National Planning Policy Framework extract.
Yes.
Which Miss Wigley has kindly provided, which will go into tab five of the supplementary bundle.
Oh, yes.
It seems to be where the copy of the NPPF is, so tab five of the supplementary bundle.
Thank you for that.
And just to flag that there is no material difference, save that the paragraph numbers have changed, it's a more up-to-date version of the NPPF, and also Miss Wigley has helpfully ensured that we have paragraph four.
Just pausing then, what we've already got at pages 149 and 150
Yes.
In the bundle is which, which production of the NPPF, which date, I mean.
So we've already got 2021.
That's what we've already got.
And so what we needed to do was to go back to what was
What was extant.
Extant at the time of the decision.
Yeah, so we'll put that in in the same place, and we'll pull, if you don't mind, we'll pull the pages 148 through to 148B. I know this seems very bureaucratic, but it just helps later on. And which, you wrote that's for February 19, that was extant, we can write at the top if we want to, extant when decision made. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you very much for that. Less there be any doubt, we have, of course, familiarised ourselves with the materials, including, of course, the skeleton arguments, for which we are grateful, they being comprehensive and clear skeleton arguments, will save time spent in Oral recitation of argument. So you can assume all of that as you make your submissions to us.
That's extremely helpful, and I'm grateful to my learned friends for their skeleton arguments which have assisted me greatly. In terms of how to approach submissions, having regard to, my lords, my lords' indication, and again, not being, I hope, too bureaucratic, we've had slightly more approaches to numbering the grounds than is perhaps helpful. So my learned friend's skeleton arguments, I've just started afresh and talked about grounds one and grounds two.
Yes.
And that's perhaps the most straightforward approach at this stage.
Oh, is it? Just to be clear, ground, what we're going to call ground one is ground, let's get this right, ground two of the appeal, is that correct, and ground three of the claim?
Yes, that is correct.
And then also ground, what we're now going to call ground two was ground, is ground three of the
It is, yes.
Appeal.
And below
Ground four of the claim.
It was.
And then ground, what we're going to call ground three, which is the section thirty-one
Two A. Two A, yes. We can call ground three.
Is ground three, and that was, what ground of the appeal was that, was that ground four of the appeal?
That's a good question.
Was it a separate?
I didn't, I didn't give it a number.
No, okay, well, that's fine, so we've made a note then. So what you're, you're going to use the numbering that has been supplied now by the first responder?
It seems easier.
Yeah, fine, okay, that's all very clear, thank you.
So in respect of ground one.
Yes.
I imagine that I'll be rather longer on ground one and rather shorter on ground two, and in respect of ground one, I propose to deal with three separate matters. Firstly, very shortly, as to really substantial agreement that there is on the law in respect of ground one, just to cover some of those points off. Secondly, at some more length, to look at the question of BPEO, because that's an important part of the policy we're looking at. And then thirdly, I want to turn to the judgment in Mansell, and use that, use paragraph forty-two of Mansell as something of a template or a touchstone for some of the matters that is important to canvas, having regard to the arguments being made by my learned friends.
Right.
So as to some of the legal principles, some of the legal principles here are extremely well established. Firstly, as to the nature of the officer's report, which is at the centre of ground one, absent any evidence otherwise, it is essentially the reasons for which planning permission was granted. My lord has the authorities armour, Lee Valley, Lee Valley at paragraph thirty, page seven four six. And it's also well established and not at all in contention that members can be taken to have adopted any interpretation or any matter which is set out in the officer's report unless there's some indication otherwise. Secondly, there's no dispute at all that weight is for the decision-maker, Tesco Stores Limited, Lord Hoffman, perhaps nothing more well-established in cases such as this than weight is for the decision-maker. And thirdly, that it may well be rationally open to a decision-maker to give no weight to a planning policy. Miss Wigley has cited the authorities for that at paragraph six of her skeleton argument, Law &amp; Mother, there's no dispute about that.
Indeed, I think Lord Hoffman said that, page seven hundred and eighty, F to G and
Yes.
Tesco and the Secretary of State.
So we had it for a long time. So the issues in this case arise from the way in which the cases have treated challenges to the grant of planning permission, where it is said that officers' reports have erred in law, where ultimately the test is whether or not what is complained about is significantly misleading. So that's, that's the threshold. And in this case, it's also a matter of the legal basis, whether as a result a material consideration has been left out of account. As I say, in the third aspect of dealing with ground one, I will turn to Mansell and will look at the way in which those authorities treat those questions. But before that, I'd like to turn to the question of BPO, because at the heart of ground one is the approach which officers took to a particular policy in the development plan. Forgive me if it's a overly straightforward point, but it's best to build it up from the bottom. If we could go to the officer's report, please, in the supplementary bundle, supplementary bundle behind tab one. At page twenty-eight of the supplementary bundle, the officer has section six, which is concerned with planning, policy and guidance, and the first subheading is the development plan. And perhaps, as every planning proof ever written said, and every officer's report says, section thirty-eight six of the 2004 Act requires that all planning authorities must determine each planning application in accordance with the policies that comprise, emphasised, the development plan. And we're told here what it is at six point two, and in the four bullet points set out, we see reference to a minerals local plan, a waste local plan, both of which, helpfully it's indicated in parentheses at the end, that those are applicable to North Yorkshire county matters, waste and mineral matters for the county. But also relevant here are local plans from the district, here the relevant district was Selby District Council, so that's the development plan.
Yeah.
So far as we're concerned, in this case, we're only concerned with the second bullet point, the North Yorkshire Waste Local Plan of 2006 and the saved policies therein. So that's, that's the basics.
Yes.
It's worthwhile then to identify the policy that we're going to be looking at, so turning to tab three again in the supplementary bundle, where at page one three seven we find policy seven forward slash three, which I'm going to come back to shortly in some more detail. But the key focus here is on seven three A, that proposals to rework deposited waste will be permitted only where the proposals represent the best practicable environmental option, BPEO, and then going on to B. And so it's because of the presence of the words BPEO in the policy that I want to say something about that. The document itself tells us something about BPEO in its supporting text. At seven point, at one, at seven, in the second sentence, we're told, in considering applications for the reworking of material, they're having just referred to PFA, which is what's at issue here, there will be a need to balance the desire to encourage reuse of material and the impact that reworking the material will have on the site and the surrounding area. It is therefore necessary to establish that the proposal represents BPEO, will therefore be expected to demonstrate that they have carried out an appraisal of the options, having regard to the social, environmental, economic, land use and resource impacts, and that their scheme represents the best available option in the context of the policies of the plan. And for my purposes, the one reason for handing up the Court of Appeal judgment in Horner is that we find an echo of what I just read, though tab seven of the authorities bundle. Tab seven of the authorities bundle.
Yes.
The Court of Appeal in the case of Horner, internal pagination, page thirteen, where the court starts to address BPEO and waste objectives, the court, paragraph forty-nine, sets out the way in which BPEO is defined in a report of the RCEP, the Royal Commission on Environmental Pollution, and what it says is, the outcome of a systematic and consultative decision-making process which emphasises the protection and conservation of the environment across land, air and water. The BPEO procedure establishes for a given set of objectives, the option that provides the most benefits or the least damage to the environment as a whole, at acceptable cost in the long term as well as in the short term. And that seems to be rather reflective of the way in which the supporting text of paragraph seven point one three is explained. So far as BPO is concerned, I don't need to go into any of the background as to what BPO is, where it comes from, or the spheres in which it is applied. The reason that I say that is the planning decision-maker is simply applying the policy, reading the policy and, so far as necessary, its supporting text in a plain and straightforward way. But I do, just mentioning in case it is of any background interest to the court, that of course, BPO is a concept which has been applied for a long time in an allied sphere of regulation, when one comes to waste management licensing as it was, and environmental permitting as it is. And because here we are at a sort of junction between waste management, which is regulated under a separate sphere of regulation, and planning, it's not surprising that we have the same term which is operative in both regimes. And if it becomes necessary to do so, I can deal with that, the term still remains extant in section seven of the Environment Act
Yeah.
In nineteen ninety, but it's not anywhere
No.
That I need to go.
For what it's worth, I don't think there's any controversy about the meaning of the concept or its relevance in planning
Yes.
Principle. The history, I think, is also not in dispute, I think it's outlined briefly in Mr. Booth's skeleton argument.
Yes.
And I didn't see any controversy about that either. If that helps you.
It does, I'm grateful. Turning then to the one authority that we do have on the topic, I want to say something about, about that, because
Yeah.
Horner, at first instance, and in Court of Appeal, is about, is about this. It's, it's about a cement plant, the way in which it is fuelled, cement plants needing enormous amounts of fuel, and a change in the operation of the cement plant so that it took a particular form of fuel which was derived from animal by-product. The argument which was run in Horner is based on the waste management law which applies to BPEO. That was the point which Mr. Trowman was running. He wasn't running a point about what was said in policy ninety-seven. Policy ninety-seven in that, in that case, had little to say about BPO itself. So the short point here is that our case is rather the reverse of, of Horner. Because the case which the parish council advances is based solely on the terms of policy seven slash three. There is no reliance upon Waste Framework Directive and domestic law which flows from that. So having made that point, I want now to go back to the policy at paragraph, at page one, three, seven, in the supplementary bundle, which we were just looking at, and to say some more about, more submissions about, and really to answer the question, what was required here? Firstly, it's our submission that it's an important policy in the development plan because it's expressly concerned with the activity at issue. It's expressly concerned with the reworking of deposited waste, and there's no, no dispute about that. And that's why I drew attention to the supporting text making express reference to pulverised fuel ash. So the policy admits of the grant of planning permission where two matters are satisfied, so permitted only where, and A and B are joined by the word and, so they're conjunctive. Firstly, as to the proposals representing BPO, but they must also show that there is, where reworking would achieve material planning benefits which would outweigh harms. So that's, B is essentially, in the, in the way we refer to these things, a straight balance, it's a straightforward balancing exercise. But one can easily see why both are necessary and on different facts. A proposal may satisfy A and not B, or may satisfy B but not A. And so it's our submission
So they're disjunctive requirements.
Absolutely. And it is, in our submission, no answer to say that if you've got a positive planning balance in respect of a particular scheme, that you get past
Yeah, they're disjunctive requirements and not alternative.
Yes.
Is the submission. Yes.
And that is a distinction with Horner.
Right. Distinction with the policy in Horner.
So my next point under this heading is to ask, well, was BPO assessed? And the answer appears to be no.
Right, again, I don't think that's controversial.
I make it absolutely clear that the officer's report does undertake the straight balance, which is at seven three B. And that is a whole series of planning judgments which I cannot and do not challenge. But for, as I will come to it under the second ground, one has to consider both the alternatives and whether or not those alternatives were the best or not. Can I make a further point clear so that I'm not misunderstood? It is not my submission that if a particular proposal were found to be not the BPEO, that permission must therefore be refused.
I know.
Rather, my submission is that that would be a matter to be taken into account in making the decision. But I would submit that that would be an important matter to take into account. With those points about the policy having been made, can I invite my lords to turn to the officer's report?
Yeah.
At the points which, given the senior president's indication, will be very much in, in mind, I'm sure.
Yes.
But given their centrality to ground one, I need to turn to page thirty-one of the officer's report behind tab one in the supplementary bundle.
Okay.
Where the, there isn't a subheading, but essentially at six point one nine, the officer turns to the North Yorkshire Waste Local Plan. And the first policy which is identified there is seven three, and six nineteen rehearses what it is. Six twenty, the supporting text is identified, explaining what BPEO is, and then we get to the words in the middle of six twenty which are central to ground one. However, whilst the BPEO was national waste policy in 2006, it's not part of the national planning policy for waste of 2014, hence it is not considered that part A of this policy can be given any weight in determining this application, and as my lords know from our skeleton arguments, that is then reflected, and indeed, I would say, repeated if we go forward to page forty-seven, in a section seven, where the officer then turns to planning considerations, having stated again at seven point one, that section thirty-eight six is the way that these things are dealt with, turns with the principle of the proposed development. And so as to the matter of principle, the first policy which is identified is seven forward slash three. So it is on that basis that I invite the court to conclude that it's important. Reminds the reader what it's concerned with. At seven three over the page on page forty-eight. At 7.3 over the page on page 48, just for context, that 7.3 is the explanation as to why the waste policies are in play here, albeit that the proposal is one which seeks to produce something to be used as a mineral, a secondary aggregate. But then the reinforcement of what we've just seen at paragraph 6.2 is to be found at paragraph 7.5 at the bottom of page 48. And there, in the third sentence, repeated, there is also no longer a requirement in national waste planning policy to establish whether a proposal represents BPO. So, and I draw attention to the words, so, as stated in paragraph 6.20 above, no weight can be given to part A of Policy 7/3. And so our submission as to what was done here is really very straightforward. The text of the officer's report is really clear. We say it's simply saying, not now in national policy, therefore, no weight. Simple as that. That's what is said. And that's what was done, and that's what members did.
Can I just ask a question on that submission? You're not submitting, are you, or are you submitting, that if this was made clear, I say, you say it wasn't made clear, that this was the officer's judgment, that it was irrational on the officer's part to say, well, it is not to be taken into account because national policy has changed?
I don't rely on rationality.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Not at all. It's a, it has the effect of leaving out of consideration an important policy which should have been taken into consideration on the basis of some reasons which just don't add up. Misleading. So the the next exercise, and the last on the ground one, is to turn to Mansell. I could invite the Court to turn to Mansell at tab four, page 71 of the through pagination, 1468.
Are we coming back to the report? I'm sure we are at some point.
My Lord, we are, yes, yes.
And we're going to Mansell now?
My Lord, yes. So the exercise is one of looking at paragraph 42 of Mansell and at the report, somewhat in conjunction. And I propose to make five submissions in this regard. But the first submission is that what's at the two identified paragraphs is significantly misleading. That's the first submission. And picking up from Mansell at 142G, it is only if the advice in the officer's report is such as to misdirect the members in a material way so that but for the flawed advice it was given, the committee's decision would or might have been different, that the Court will be able to conclude that the decision itself was rendered unlawful by that advice. And that is first of all, identifying materiality in the context of the direction which members were being given, but making it clear that it has to have that material effect and but for that it wouldn't have made any difference. And significantly misleading is what has to be shown. So why do I submit that? I've identified the statutory priority to be given to the development plan. National policy is of course a material consideration which cannot make a development plan policy irrelevant. And it struck me in preparation for this hearing that there's a gap in what I provided the Court with in that regard, so I thought it would be helpful to hand up the Court of Appeals judgment in Hockin Homes Limited.
Yes.
Which I think we thought to be nine.
Right.
For some fairly well-established propositions which are relevant to what I just submitted. These paragraphs I'm going to go to, we're not in any way disturbed by, indeed, if we look at it, we'd find strengthened by what was said in the Supreme Court in this case. But this is, in my submission, one of the most helpful ways of approaching this question. Page 14 of the case report, we come to paragraph 42 beneath the heading, how is the policy? Paragraph 49 of the framework to be applied. And so here we're dealing with a case which is perhaps at the apex of a long series of cases which were debating the impact.
Which paragraph, you say?
Paragraph 42, my Lord, page 14. I'm going to go to 42, 46 and 47. Where the debate was, what is the impact of a policy in the NPPF on development plan policies which are said to be out of date for either reasons of being not consistent with national policy or by reason of other triggers which are particularly relevant to housing cases? And so it struck me this was a useful set of statements to orientate ourselves on this submission. That the NPPF is a policy document, paragraph 42. It ought not to be treated as if it had the force of statute. It does not and could not displace the statutory presumption in favour of the development plan, City of Edinburgh, referenced in section 72 and 38.6 of the 2004 Act. Government policy is a material consideration external to the development plan and policies in the framework, including those relating to the presumption in favour of sustainable development, do not modify the statutory framework. The making of decisions on applications for planning permission, they operate within that framework as the NPPF itself acknowledges.
Yes.
It's for the decision-maker to decide what weight should be given to the framework policies insofar as they are relevant to proposals. Likely to merit significant weight, but the Court will not intervene unless the weight given to it by the decision-maker can be said to be unreasonable in the Wendsbury sense. Then, just to summarise, 46 and 47. 46, there's reference to Tesco Stores Limited, to which we've already diverted during the course of the morning. And in the last two sentences of 46, the NPPF, neither paragraph of the NPPF says that development plan policy for the supply of housing that's out of date should be given no weight, minimal weight, or indeed, any specific weight. They do not say that such a policy should simply be ignored or disapplied. I emphasise, they do not say that such a policy should be ignored or disapplied. The idea appears to have found some favour in the first instant judgments that this question has arisen and is not correct. And I adopt that as far as it's applicable here.
Do you submit to us, in the light of that or any way, that it is only if government policy spells out the proposition that no weight is to be given, or little weight is to be given, or whatever it is, to some policy proposition that it displaces or supersedes, that the decision-maker is at liberty to do that?
My Lord, yes. And I was very careful listening to the way my Lord put that, and it's the words at liberty to which are particularly important because even in those circumstances, the decision-maker retains a discretion, saying, yes, I know it's the policy, but I'm not going to do that.
I mean, as I read what the Court was saying in paragraph 46.
Yes.
Let us take the words at place value. They do not say that such a policy should simply be ignored or disapplied. It's right as a matter of fact.
Yes.
But that's not the same proposition as saying that it's only then that a particular level of weight can be given. That would be a false syllogism, if that's the right word.
It would be.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was asking you.
I have nothing further to add on that.
No, no, fine.
And I just thought that was a useful, again, touchstone on that point.
Yeah. Right.
So going back to my first submission, significantly misleading.
Yeah.
If the Court, and I'll come to this in due course, if the Court accepts that the words in the report just mean what they say and what I submit they mean, then it is incorrect and significantly misleading to say not now in national waste policy, no weight can be given.
You mean incorrect as a matter of law?
Yes. Incorrect as a matter of law because weight can be given. This is exactly what we've just seen in paragraphs 42 and 46 of Hockin Homes. And what one gains from reading 6.20 and 7.5 is that what's going on in the officer's mind is exactly what is written. Because of this, then that. And it's simply incorrect.
Can I just ask how far you take that submission in this way? If, and I know you say that this isn't a fair reading of the officer's report, even on a benign reading, but if the officer had said, my judgment is, because national policy has moved on, I wouldn't apply any weight to this old, say, policy, you would accept that that would be all right? As long as he made it clear that that was his judgment to the committee?
I think that I would be cautious about accepting that immediately. What I would accept is that, and I hope I made this clear at the outset, is that the question of weight is a matter of judgment. And my Lord's question focused on the topic of judgment. And so to that extent, I perfectly see why the Court has asked that question. I do submit that one would still have to be very cautious in understanding what the officer was doing. Simply inserting a mantra of judgment doesn't cure incorrect thinking. Doesn't cure it. So if the thinking still remains just because of that, I'm going to come to this conclusion. What's happening there is that the, and it's the key legal reason why it's so important, is that the statutory weight to be given to the development plan is being short-circuited. And so if the question my Lord had put was, if the planning officer had included a discussion of what the policy does, what it's intended to achieve, and how that compares in a much more fine-grained manner with what is an important policy in the development plan directly on the reuse of PFA, then it is certainly open, and I make it completely clear, that it would be open to come to that conclusion and adequately reasoned. I would then be in enormous difficulty challenging that on the basis of rationality, but rationality is no part of my case in any event. It's a rather longer answer than perhaps, my Lord.
Thank you very much.
Can I just pursue it though? My Lord, for asking the question and for your answer, of course. I'm deliberately going to change the words of the officer now. I'm not saying that this is what she was saying. I think I'm right in saying she.
It was, yeah.
She might have said, for example, members will note, members will recall that the national policy in... upon which criterion A in Policy 7.3 was founded has now been superseded by policy in... which makes no mention of best environmental, best practicable environmental option. A concept which in this context has fallen away from national policy. Accordingly, in your officer's judgment, no weight can be given to the policy in... i.e. the previous policy document. Now, the officer didn't say that. Whether the officer meant that is not what I'm asking you. Or could be taken to have meant that. I'm not asking that question. But if the officer had said that or something like it, would your case have any traction at all? But bearing in mind, if I can just help you, because you've, in answer to an earlier question, my Lord, confirmed that you do not argue a rationality. I remind you that you've said that. Would your case then have any traction?
My Lord, essentially, I repeat my previous answer.
Right.
Because my Lord's development of that would-be advice is essentially the same. Because the essential elements of it are adding in judgment and relating it to national policy and nothing else. So to use my Lord's words, my case would have less traction. And I wouldn't go so far as to say that I would not have a case on those terms for the reasons which I've just given.
Right, so.
Because it is getting pretty close to saying, insert the word judgement as a mantra, and you're safe.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but anyway, you've submitted that. I think really what this is coming close to focusing upon is this concept. Section 38.6 states a statutory obligation to make the decision in accordance with the development plan unless material considerations indicate otherwise. Does that enable the decision-maker in appropriate circumstances to say, I give no weight to this particular element of the development plan, conscious as I am that it is in the development plan, conscious as I am of my duty under section 38.6, but because national policy has changed in a material way, I, in my planning judgment, give no weight to this element of development plan policy, knowing full well as I am that it is in government policy and conscious as I am of my duty under section 38.6. I'm sorry, that's rather long-winded.
No.
But I seek to capture everything in that concept. What do you say to that concept?
At the risk of being tedious about it, I think that my first answer, my Lord, was, is it still the same? Because if one thinks about the additional elements, essentially, the questions have been put to me on three occasions, and on that third point, I feel the way in which it's put, that the essential elements are the same. And what we're seeing in the report, I realise it's not my Lord's question, but what we're seeing in the report. but what we're seeing in the report is something which is really stark. And perhaps what is, another way of putting the question which I've been asked, is is the Court perhaps saying to me, should one infer there? Should one read into what is said as a matter of read-in words along the lines of as a matter of my judgment? In my considered view.
Well, my questions were not premised on some construction of the report that adds in words. I was simply testing the concept.
Yes.
And I was careful to say that this was not my representation of what the officer had actually said.
My lord was very careful, yes, and I understand.
So don't be anxious about answering on that premise.
So, to arrive at a position where one is going to give no weight to an important policy in the development plan, where the reason for doing that at all is change in national policy, requires clear indication of having directed one's mind to the role, origin, importance, purpose of policy. But I have to concede on the authorities that it is legally open, when done properly, to conclude no weight.
To a development plan policy?
Yes, that is very clear from the authorities, that that is, when done, using the shorthand, when done properly, that is that is a position that can be lawfully arrived at.
Yeah, I mean, to help you, I don't want to prolong this, but I think, I sense that we're getting close to the heart of the matter, so I will pursue it if I may.
Of course.
It may save time overall. We haven't looked at what Lord Hoffman said in Tesco. Perhaps we should, because we might tend to think that we know what he said because we've seen it so often, but then we go back and we find it wasn't quite that. So I would find that a useful exercise.
Yes.
But is there a direct statement anywhere in the authorities that it is legally open to the decision-maker to conclude that no weight is to be given to a material consideration, including one that is in the development plan? Is that spelt out anywhere? Because I don't think, actually, if we look again at what Lord Hoffman said, he went, he actually articulated that proposition in that way. Is it anywhere else in the authorities? Or do you say that it just inevitably follows from what he said? Oh, we don't have it, do we?
Yeah.
Well, never mind. Is it in any of the authorities?
I don't, I don't.
We do.
It's referred to but not.
I will never criticize counsel for not putting in authorities, I don't think.
Well, we're very conscious of the practice there.
Yes. Putting in authorities that we all know quite well.
Yeah.
Well, never mind.
We'll help with that.
Yes, come back to that. Right, I've asked you enough. I apologize if I've interrupted the flow too much.
It's been extremely helpful, if I may say so. May I turn to my second submission, which is about consistency?
Yes.
It is said for the counsel, essentially, relying upon a paragraph in the framework which deals with consistency, that that's all the officer was doing, and that's really what what the case is about. It's worthwhile to have a look at the framework so that we understand what's being said. And so if we turn to the supplementary bundle at tab five, there is an annex to the framework, Annex One, Implementation. And we're told that the framework contains material considerations, and then in second paragraph, "However, existing policies should not be considered outdated simply because they are adopted or made prior to the publication of this framework. Time, undue weight should be given to them according to their degree of consistency with this framework. The closer the policies in the plan to the policies in the framework, the greater the weight that may be given." Developing what I've been submitting in my first submission, that is the exercise that that needs to be undertaken. And it's a much finer-grained exercise than is apparent from the officer's report. Because I submit that it's an error of law to reason without more that a change in policy, change in national policy leads to a conclusion, even having regard to what's said in the implementation annex, that one has no weight being given to an important policy for the determination of an application. As my lord has already highlighted, it would have been open to the government to say exactly that. Rather says the opposite. Be careful, just because something is adopted at a particular time, that doesn't lead to any particular conclusion, it's warning against that. Can I, at this stage, just highlight the extent to which in their submissions to date, that the respondents have made any submission that it is lawful simply to reason not now in national policy, therefore, no weight. That's not a submission which I've been able to detect in any of the skeleton arguments which I've seen today. Maybe that is going to be the submission, but I'll deal with that if it is made. My third submission is about undue rigor. And so, going back to going back to Mansell, which I left a little while ago, back in in tab four.
Yeah.
Paragraph forty-two, page seventy-one, and four-six-eight. At the second indent, "The principles are not complicated. Planning officers' reports to the committee are not made with undue rigor. And in my submissions, I must be both reasonable and benevolent." Can I perhaps take it in this way? If a question had been asked by a member at the meeting, a question could come up along these lines, "Can you just explain to me, why is it we should give no weight to the BPEO policy?" Why is it? If one only has the answer in the officer's report, it's very stark. For one reason. And in my submission, I'm not reading that officer's report in a way which falls foul of either being legalistic with undue rigor, reading it like a statute, failing to be reasonably benevolent. And while I do draw attention to, I do do it, and I do make this submission, that the use of the words hence in six-twenty and so in seven-point-five really make the position very clear as to the nature of the advice, the direction which is being given. And I make no apology for highlighting those particular words. And if one considers the sentence which I've just said, change no to an, I've said something which is completely different. It's important in my submission for the Court to engage with the structure of those sentences, hence and so. And that is not, in my submission, contrary to the thrust of what is summarized in paragraph forty-two of the second indent. Rather, what is being submitted for the council and by the developer is really what the Court should do, is change these words into something else. It's to change the language. And that what is written there is not really what is meant. Just as an aside, this is absolutely correctly, it's not a case in which there's any witness statement which seeks to elaborate on what's said. That's absolutely the right course to take. The Court is occupied solely with what is said in the officer's report. Takes me to my fourth submission. And that is about what the Court can assume. And so in Mansell, going a little further in the second indent, after reasonable benevolence, we are to bear in mind that the reports are written for councillors with local knowledge. And the cases which are behind that summary, I cannot and do not have any argument with. But I do want to highlight the context. So, for example, Faber is a case about development for land with the use of aircraft. Noise was an issue, noise from aircraft causing effects on amenity. Faber is a case which says, well, notwithstanding what's in the report, the members can weigh it up for themselves whether that's going to be a problem. So, the context is important in my submission because there are matters which are inherently very subjective, landscape, noise, et cetera, which members will apply their local knowledge. Likewise, in respect of some policies, green belt policy may be extremely familiar to a particular committee. And even if the report is wrong, the Court will be very slow to interfere because the members will know. But, that's why I make the context point. And I do submit that local knowledge and what members know doesn't extend to the topic which is at issue here. They need it to be correctly directed as to how to deal with policy seven-three. And so I do submit that the the Court cannot assume that there is an error in my submissions, that members will have corrected it. And my fifth submission is about the topic of whether the officer's report is a recommendation. In this regard, it's the first occasion on which I've done it. Could we go to the judgment, which takes us to the core bundle? The core bundle has the judgment, as I well know, at tab eleven. And if we could go to, in the through-pagination, page one-hundred-and-three. Page one-hundred-and-three.
Yeah.
Paragraph one-two-five is at the bottom of the page, where the judge explains that he's in no doubt that ground three cannot be made good. Members of the planning committee can be expected to be aware of the fact that an officer's report is a recommendation to the committee. Just pausing there, as a bald statement, that of course is true, it contains a recommendation. But in my submission, that does not admit properly of the submission that one can therefore set aside the direction which is being given to members on important matters. Not least because what we are looking at in the officer's report is the reasons for the grant, absent any evidence otherwise. And so to the extent that the judge is to be taken to be saying at one-two-five, that that is something which really sets aside any flaw that there might have been, and I do submit that that is wrong. Just so I deal with the rest of the paragraph. "As a planning professional, the officer gives the committee his or her considered view on the matters, bearing for and against the grant. In order to reach a recommendation, the officer must inevitably form their own view on weight, et cetera. Having provided his or her reasoning, it's perfectly permissible for the officer to express the view that in the light of that reasoning, he or she has decided that no weight can be given to the policy concerned." If, just to be clear, if that is saying it's just a recommendation, then I do submit that that's going much further than any of the authorities properly support if that is said to be a get-out-of-jail card in respect of a case like this. So, my lords, those are the five submissions I want to make in respect of matters arising from the cases on officer's report. I conclude by saying I rely upon all of the matters which I've set out, particularly in paragraph seven of my skeleton argument, but I don't repeat them to save time. Which brings me to ground two.
Yes. Now, just drawing breath, as it were. Does ground two depend on ground one wholly or partly?
Partly. Partly because if I lose on ground one, then I lose on ground two.
Ah, right. It depends partly on ground one. But if you lose on ground one, you lose on ground two.
Yeah.
Sounds more like wholly then.
Yeah.
Well, no, I hope I'm being fair about it, because there are other interdependencies between the grounds.
Yes, sorry, well, depend may be the wrong verb then. To unwrap this, if I may. Ground two, what we're calling ground two, is the alternatives ground.
Yes.
The genesis of that concept of alternatives is BPEO.
It is.
Under policy seven-three criterion A.
It is.
Not in green belt policy.
No.
Not in authority.
No.
But the genesis of it is entirely in seven-three A.
It is.
If we were to hold that the officer did not give legally erroneous advice to the members on the weight to be given to seven-three A, that wholly subsumes any submissions you might make on alternatives arising under seven-three A.
Exactly.
And that's why you've accepted, which I thought you were going to. And that's why you accept it, which I thought you were going to. If you lost on ground one, you lost on ground two.
Yes.
And that's what I meant, that's actually what I meant by depend, though I didn't spell it out. But you say there are interdependencies.
There are, yeah.
Well, with what you've said in mind, do carry on.
Thank you. So, just to map out the background, just very shortly, my lord has sort of alluded to it already. Alternatives in planning cases are somewhat unusual. And the roots into alternatives being material are limited in scope. No part of this case that there is a common law route into it via cases like trust has forty, is no part of this case that it's based upon alternatives in the context of E I A, no part of this case that it's from anywhere else other than from the policy. And also by way of context, it's not the approach in planning law that a development is turned away because one identifies a development which is said to be better, unless a policy says that. And so, it's an unusual policy in those respects. It raises alternatives, options, it raises comparative assessments best.
Is that why they got rid of it in two thousand and fourteen?
No, it wasn't. The approach the approaches to the other sphere of regulation, it'd become quite complicated. And so, it's quite plagued by acronyms. And so, we have an interrelationship between B P E O and BATNEC, which is the best available technique, not entailing excessive cost. And you've got a waste hierarchy. And the policy approach evolved and it was to some extent simplified. But the concepts, the overall concepts, never really went away. Thank you. In that sphere of regulation, often directed to the question of whether or not a particular waste operation, for example, I don't think you're allowed to call them incinerators anymore, but in respect of incinerators, that sort of matter would come up. So, those sort of general matters are in hand. The policy really requires two steps. It requires that one considers what the options or the alternatives are. And it requires some assessment of what is best. What is the best environmental option, having regard to all of those matters which fit within the word of practicability, which of course include cost, et cetera. If that is an acceptable way of looking at it, taking the first point, alternatives, it's obviously at issue here, from the thrust of, the general thrust of the policy, to consider whether reworking P F A is the only way to meet that need. Or are you going to use a different secondary aggregate or primary aggregate? Those are obvious alternatives. I think that the answer to that from the developer, from the second respondent, is essentially that it's fanciful to say that that wasn't considered. I don't accept that. It's also, in my submission, going to be relevant to look at not only what it is that's proposed to be escalated, but how that is to be done. The nature of the transport is a big issue in this case. Also as to location, and a number of planning matters would go into that question. And I do raise in my skeleton argument the topic of green belt. But I don't put ground two on the basis of a green belt alternatives argument. That's not the way in which I put it. But I do draw attention to green belt, not least because this is a case of inappropriate development in the green belt. That's a binary question. Any proposal in the green belt is either one or the other. And in this case, it was inappropriate development in the green belt, which required very special circumstances to be shown. So, it's always going to be material to that assessment, to know what the alternatives are. It's going to be more difficult to show very special circumstances in circumstances where one has an alternative which isn't.
Well, you said it's always going to be material. I wonder about that. Certainly, it can be material. But green belt policy does not articulate an alternative component to very special circumstances. Either at national or here at local level. I think I'm right in saying.
And I respectfully agree. But in circumstances where in circumstances where one has directed one's mind to that question and found an alternative not in the green belt, it would be very hard to say that it wasn't material.
Oh, it might be material, it might or might not be material. That's really what I was driving at. It was only because you submitted it was always going to be material that I asked you the question. If I may suggest to you that conceivably is overstating it.
Very well.
But you feel free to reject that proposition.
It's not my ambition to turn this into a leading green belt case.
But to be fair to you, and I did check this, as originally pleaded in the claim form,
Yes.
there is cross-reference to green belt, the green belt context
Yes.
for this part of your argument. It's not as if nobody is suggesting that you've brought in the rejected ground, original ground one, which Lord Justice Lewis saw had no real prospect of
Yes.
success. You had originally pleaded this out in your claim.
Yes. But there is some interaction with a number of green belt points.
Yeah. So, to that extent, of course, you're at liberty to rely on that.
So, that brings me really to, I don't really need to go any further on the details of the matters. Brings me to the question whether those things have been considered and whether they've been assessed by reference to whether or not they're the B P E O. And for my part, that's something I find very difficult to find in the evidence.
There are passages, aren't there, elsewhere in the officer's report? Seven forty-one, seven forty-two, seven one four one eight six.
Which Mr Booth in particular relies upon.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to say anything about those passages?
My lord, can I see what's said about them by Mr Booth? To the extent I need to, I'll do so. The overarching submission is going back to the Horner point, which is when once one has properly identified what the options are, it then becomes a question of which is best.
Yes, because the B in B P E O is best, not better. It is best, it is optimal. So, in a sense, one might say that the task confronting the applicant under seven three A is to prove a negative. That there isn't something not merely better, but that is the best that has been considered.
Yes, and to the extent, one is always cautious when one hears the proposition that one has to prove a negative.
What I'm saying is, it's not enough under the policy simply to assert
No, it's not.
reworking partly restored sites such as Guelph.
Yeah.
is the best we can do. We know the material is there, we know the senosphere has been worked out. We know, and it's been deposited there over many years, we know where it is, we know its quality, we can get it out. We can make the highway work. Therefore, we should have planning permission. You say, under the policy, that's so far so good. But that does not absolve you, under seven three A,
That's what I say.
of considering other options.
Exactly.
To see whether this is the best.
Yes. And just to make it absolutely clear, the point against myself may fail to show it's the best, but may still get planning permission. That's possible.
Yes, in the context in which the point is put, of course, we don't lose sight of, which is the local community here, having experienced the previous working and restoration of the site, both working and restoration, now faces a long period, twenty-five years or so, a new kind of working with all the attendant traffic and other environmental impacts. That is not lost sight of.
I'm grateful. Can I just pick up? I want the court to have, of course, a completely accurate view of what it is that those effects would be. And I'm criticised to some extent for the way in which I finish off my skeleton argument. And I just want, it struck me that the way to deal with the traffic question is to draw attention to the officer's report at page nine. So, I want to highlight, I'm not going to read it or spend any time, the court may find that in regard to paragraphs three point six and three point seven, which essentially capture what it is that's proposed to be done and essentially where. And over the page at eleven, where at three one three, that the highway's impacts are summarised. And that's all that I want to draw attention to in that regard. One of the things I was one always gets this point, as to one-way and two-way traffic movements. It's accurate that there's one three three leaving and one three three entering.
Yeah, two six six two-way means one hundred and thirty-three in, one hundred and thirty-three out.
That's exactly right.
The numbers are always going to be equal.
That's right.
So, it's two six six, not five three two.
Exactly. Which brings me then to ground three.
Yeah.
I have drawn attention to the approach to this provision by reference to the Plan B earth case. I'm very happy to go to it, but I imagine that the court has read it and is familiar with it.
Yes. This was undisturbed by the Supreme Court.
It was, undisturbed. And so, the court finds that at tab eight. It's a very very long judgment dealing with very many issues. But we get to the topic of relief at page two two eight, one five two nine of the report. Where at two six seven, we are referred to simplex and the approach taken there. And at two six nine, to the position under section thirty-one of the Senior Courts Act. And we're, of course, concerned here with two A.
Yeah, this being a claim for judicial review as opposed to a statutory challenge, we're in the territory of section thirty-one.
We are.
Not merely simplex.
Not merely simplex. Key phrase being, if it appears to the court to be highly likely that the same outcome for the applicant, highly likely that the outcome for the applicant would not have been substantially different if the conduct complained of that, we submit, is a high bar. The court be very careful not to go into the forbidden territory of planning judgment.
Your suggestion here is that if the members were, as you submit, on ground one, on both grounds, misled as a matter of law in the approach to be taken to seven three A, the frame for this consideration is that that is the error that hadn't occurred.
Yes, that is my submission.
You submit, how can the court, rhetorically you submit, how can the court comfortably conclude it's not highly likely?
Exactly.
Or that it's highly likely the result would have been the same if I could strip out the negatives.
And there is here some interaction with some of the way in which the court summarises approach to officer's reports in Mansal because the court's careful to say there that it's very fact-specific, it depends upon the particular circumstances. And that this is a case where circumstances are further unusual by reference to the views which members took. One, we have in the papers at three oh seven, the record, a vote on the proposal, it probably is worth going to see if it sees it, tab eleven, three oh seven, in the minutes. They're marked draft, but I don't think they can turn that. Three oh seven, in the supplementary bundle. A vote on the proposal was undertaken, which resulted in a tied position.
Yes.
And was approved on the chairman's casting vote. And so, there is some interaction with the way in which we've looked at matters underground one. I do say that in any event, this is an error of the nature and importance in the context of section thirty-eight six in this application, which, if I'm right, is an important one, and I'd oppose in any event. But I do pray in aid of that further factor. Wouldn't have taken much for a different decision.
Thank you.
One way or another, I think I've covered most of my points, unless I can assist any further.
Thank you very much, Mr Kimber. Thank you. Yes, Miss Whitley.
Good afternoon, your lordship, it's just good afternoon. Just bear with me a moment while I rearrange myself. My lords, I'd like to start with paragraph six of my skeleton argument, if I may, which sets out matters which I had thought were not in dispute. And it's page twenty of the court. So, I set out three matters there, which I understood and some of which I still understand not to be in dispute. Firstly, of course, it cannot be disputed. That regard was had to see seven three A in the sense that its relevance in the sense that its relevance is highlighted. And I'd add that its requirements are set out, and its requirements are clearly discussed in the officer's report. And we've seen that at paragraph six point seventeen, six point eighteen of the officer's report. Secondly, it's not in dispute that the weight to be attached to a planning policy, and I include there a development plan policy, is a matter of planning judgment for the decision-maker. And in exercising that judgment, it's open to the decision-maker to give a policy no weight. And my lords, Law Homes is the authority for that proposition. We, the reason we don't have it in the bundle is because it was a proposition that was not in dispute. But we can.
I, I said that, did I?
That's my recollection, my lord, yes, that it was, you said that, paragraph forty-six, and we can turn that up if we need to.
I'm not saying I didn't say it.
I forget many things.
In my defence, it was. It was some time ago. It was actually longer ago than twenty seventeen.
Yes, I think the report was later.
It was about, it was twenty fourteen, I think. Anyway, yes, I, so I, I need to look at, we need to look at paragraph forty-seven.
And it's also in the Muller, it says, Justice Gilbert in Muller Property Group makes that same point at paragraph fourteen.
Can I just ask, on, on that point? The national policy into, before the change, was to have a B P E O requirement. North Yorkshire adopt a B P O requirement in their local waste plan.
Yes.
Then in two thousand and fourteen, the national requirement is dropped.
Yes.
But there's no inconsistency between the two policies, because North Yorkshire decided to keep its local waste plan with a B P E O. So why can you give no weight at all to the B P E O going forward? North Yorkshire could have said, well, national policy's dropped it, excellent, now we'll get rid of this silly policy, because we can, but they didn't, they kept it.
My lord, yes, they, they kept it, that, I mean, there may be all sorts of reasons why they didn't get rid of it immediately, because it takes some time to review a development plan. It's not simply a case of issuing a statement saying we're getting rid of it. But my lord, it's, there's, there's, it's a degree of judgment. It's open to a planning decision-maker and a planning officer advising a decision-maker to give a policy no weight on the basis that national policy has changed. And I, I accept that it doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily inconsistent for development plan policy to not include exactly the same requirements as national policy. But it is a matter of judgment for the decision-maker to consider whether it is. I mean, it, it's not a, it's not a binary issue, consistency. It's a matter of judgment, having regard to the nature of national policy, what's changed, and, and the basis on which the development plan was originally drafted. So it's, it's, it's a sliding scale, and that's what's set out in the M P P F itself, which, which my learned friend took you to paragraph two one three, which says you give weight according to consistency, the more consistent, the greater the weight. But there, there's clearly no dictat in national policy as to, as to the weight to give. And, and in any event, any dictat in national policy would be contrary to statute, because it cannot, as a matter of law, overtake what is said in section thirty-eight six. But that doesn't depart from the proposition that a decision-maker, having regard to all relevant information, can, can come to that conclusion, that there should be no weight.
Thank you.
So that's what I say in, in, in my sub-paragraph three there. In this case, it was rationally open to the decision-maker to give policy seven three A no weight on the basis that its requirements were inconsistent with the more recent government's planning policy for waste, in the sense that the government's planning policy for waste had dropped that requirement. And I, I, this is where I, I, I said I had assumed this was not in dispute. But, but there does seem to be perhaps a slight dispute now, for the first time, in that my learned friend seems to be suggesting that inconsistency alone is not sufficient to enable a decision-maker to give a policy no weight.
I'm not sure if he is submitting that.
Well, if he's not submitting that, then I'm, I'm, I'm content. But if he were submitting that, I would say that, that was wrong, because the, in, in my submission, the, the discretion or the judgment is untrammeled by the, the planning officer and the decision-maker. Their, their judgment is untrammeled as to the weight to which they can give, give to a policy in this regard in particular. There may, there may be some differences under section sixty-six.
Well, it's not untrammeled by rationality, is it?
No, no, absolutely.
I mean, it is, it is trammelled, if that's an English word, by public law principle, which characterises Weddinsbury principles.
Absolutely understood.
But just go, can I just take, take us back? Law is cited, as we've seen. Was that a passage in law which was expressly approved in Hopkins Homes in the Supreme Court? Would be my question.
I'd need to check, my lord.
Yeah, I, well, so would I.
And we haven't got the Supreme Court decision there.
No, we don't, we've got, we've got the Court of Appeal, but not the Supreme Court decision. Some passages in law were, I think, expressly endorsed. I'm not sure if that was one of them. I, I simply can't remember.
My lord, perhaps we can
Yes, of course.
seek to check that in the initial statement.
Yes, of course.
My lord, just in opening, so I don't forget this when I get into the detail, I also wanted to make one additional point. My learned friend in his oral submissions made, it bases some emphasis on the fact that the officer's report stands as the reasons for the decision. And, and seems to suggest that more rigor should be applied to it in that instance. My lord, there is authority for that proposition where there is a reasons challenge. Now here, of course, there is no reasons challenge, either in the claim or in the appeal. And I think there's a, there's a case that I was involved in called G A R E, G A R E, in the High Court, where Martin Roger C, sitting as a judge in the High Court, accepted my proposition based on a decision of Mrs. Justice Lang, that where, where there's a reasons challenge and the officer's report stands as the reasons, then of course, all the principles relating to adequacy of reasons can be employed to attack the officer's report. And the officer's report can, can be attacked under the principles of Southbuck's and Porter and those, those types of decisions, as opposed to the standard in Mansell about whether it merely misleads. My, my understanding and the way I, I'm arguing the case is, is that there is no reasons challenge here, and that we are confined to considering whether the, the officer's report has gone wrong in the Mansell sense and the other authorities that are, that are cited in the skeletons. So, my lords, assuming that we can proceed on the basis that those first three propositions are not in dispute. My, my submission is that the, well, perhaps before I get there, my, my learned friend is really confined to having to persuade your lordships that the officer fetters the discretion and gives a legal dictat as to the weight that can be accorded to the policy. And that that is how the officer's advice is received. I say that is wrong. The officer's report merely provides reasoned advice to members as to the degree of weight to accord to policies. And the officer's report would have been expected to do that. That was, that's the natural role of an officer's report. And it would have been understood by members in that, in that way, in that context. This is a report written by a planning officer. It's not, it could be contrasted with perhaps a, a matter arising in a committee meeting where, where the, where the council solicitor is asked to give some advice, give legal advice as to what could or cannot be taken into account. That is entirely a different scenario. Here, members would have understood in the day-to-day business of a planning committee that that's the role of the officer. And, and my lord, that can be seen throughout the report i, i, in the context in which it's written. And I'll, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment, just to give you a bit of a signposting of what I'm going to do in the next few minutes. There are four authorities which I want to refer to briefly on, on, on the interpretation, or how we read the officer's, officer's report. And I'll, and I'll come to them in a moment, but they are the Co-op Group, Mansell, Oxton Farms and Lee Valley. And I, I want to take some things from each of those authorities and make my submissions in relation to the officer's report from those. So I, I wanted to start with the familiar, and if I need to take you to it, I can, but the familiar proposition that the officer's report has to be read as a whole. And that proposition is made good in the Lee Valley decision, which is at tab six of the authorities. Paragraph thirty-one on page seven four six. First sentence, it is well established that planning officer's reports to committee must be read not in an unduly critical way, but fairly and as a whole. So you get the context of how the report is written, amongst other things, from reading the report as a whole. And if I could just then, against that submission, take you to two matters in the officer's report. Firstly, just the general way in which it is written. We perhaps start at tab one of the supplementary bundle, paragraph page twenty-nine. And this is section six, which my learned friend's already taken to you two. And you'll see, if you look through the, through the various paragraphs, I'll take you to some, some individual ones in a moment. There is a general exercise undertaken by the officer as to the weight to accord to development plan policies. And she considers each of the main policies in turn. She assesses their consistency or otherwise with the M P P F. And then she gives her view as to the weight to accord to the policies in light of that consistency or inconsistency. So you can see at six point, six and six point seven, for example, she's assessing saved policy four one, and its various criteria against what the M P P F requires. And she concludes, so for example, at six point seven, therefore, these elements of policy four one are consistent with the M P P F and can be given great weight. And then at six point eight, she says criterion H does not conflict with the provisions of the M P P F, however, there are differences in the objectives. And then she goes on to explain what they are, and she says, therefore, the M P P F should be given more weight in this instance.
Do you suggest that when we see her in some places saying can, and other places saying should?
Yeah.
Far from that being a deliberate differentiation, that that is really consistent?
Yes, it's the way.
It's two different modes of expressing planning judgment.
Absolutely. And, and you can, you can follow that throughout, and I, I'm not going to take you to them all. You can see it go on the paragraph six point ten to six point fourteen of, and fifteen on page thirty, and all the way leading up to the, the key paragraphs that we're concerned in in this appeal, six point nineteen, six point twenty. That is the, the mode of advice that she adopts. She discusses the consistency, and she says what she considers as a result should be the weight to accord to the policy, or, or that can be accorded to the policy. There's no magic to the word can, that's only accorded to any particular instance.
I think you also stress, and perhaps you're about to come to this, that we shouldn't neglect the use of the formulation, it is considered that, or it is not considered that.
My lord, I was precisely about to come.
The officer speaks always in the passive voice here.
Yes.
Don't think the first person, singular or plural, is ever adopted.
I think that's right.
But the style is passive voice.
My lord, yes, that's right.
It is considered that, it is not considered that.
In my submission, that's, that's quite common in officer's report, officer's reports.
I'm not saying it's uncommon.
But it's, but my lord, yes, just the fact that it's in the passive voice does not detract, in my submission, from, from the proposition that it is an expression of the officer's consideration. And my lords will have also picked up that, that those, that precise formulation is used in six point twenty in relation to the subject policy, policy seven three. Halfway down, hence it is not considered that part A of this policy can be given any weight in determining this application. And of course, where that is then cross-referenced later, and you'll have seen this in judgment, the, the words it is considered, that's cross-referenced later in seven point seventeen, I think. Sorry. Seven point five on page twenty-eight. The words it is considered do not appear again, but of course, that's just, that, that's a summary and a reference back to what is stated in paragraph six point twenty. So it imports the same formulation, it is considered, or it is not considered. So my lord, my lords, my first point on reading it as a whole is simply that, that that's the tenor of the advice is clear, and, and, and you get that from, from reading it all as one. The other point I should make in terms of reading it as a whole is that, of course, in numerous places, the statutory test is actually set out. My learned friend has, has already referred you to to six point one and six point two on page twenty-eight, where it's clear that the members are reminded that the primary statutory requirement is that planning authorities have to determine each application in accordance with the planning policies which comprise the development plan, unless material considerations indicate otherwise. And of course, the M P P F is a material consideration, but it's a matter of judgment as to whether it considers, whether that indicates otherwise. And it's very clear that six point two identifies saved policies of the waste plan, which includes policy seven three under that formulation, under that advice. That point is also reiterated, let's see, have the references at page forty-seven. Paragraph seven point one, section thirty-eight six, again reiterated. And the very next policy, the policy that's considered relevant to that point is policy seven three. And that's, that's, that's mentioned at seven point two. So members can be in no doubt that section thirty-eight six applies. And just, just for your note, it's also reiterated again at eight point one and eight point two on page eighty-five.
Sorry, which paragraphs?
Sorry, eight point one and eight point two on page eighty-five.
Yeah, thank you.
So my lord, from, from reading it as a whole, members will have been, had at the forefront of their mind, that statutory test and the exercise that is being undertaken by the officer, which reflects, whilst it doesn't specifically refer to paragraph two one three of the M P P F, it squarely reflects the exercise under national policy as to according weight by reference to consistency or otherwise with the, yeah, or with, yeah, with national policy generally. My lords, another point I take from the authorities which I apply here is in a number of the authorities, including the one we just looked at, Lee Valley. And it is to be assumed by the court that the planning committee knows and understands the statutory test. Now, in a sense, I don't need that for the primary statutory test, because in any event, as I've just made clear, that's recited in a number of places in the officer's report. But this point is elaborated on a little bit further in the Co-op authorities. I missed Justice Holgate, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, paragraphs thirteen, fourteen, yes, paragraph thirteen. Bottom of page three, "Background knowledge includes a working knowledge of the statutory test for the determination of planning applications," referring in that case to the controls on development affecting a listed building. "But by parity of reason, the same principle applies to the test, in this case dealing with the application of development control in the green belt." And my lord, you will have seen in my skeleton argument, I take that one step further and say by parity of reasoning, particularly in the context of this officer's report, members would have been aware that consistency or otherwise with the MPPF does not legally set out as a matter of law the weight to be accorded to development plan policies. It is simply a matter of policy that is to be taken into account when exercising planning judgment as to the weight to accord to planning policies.
That's ascribing to a lay panel, albeit expert in planning matters, quite a judgment on legal matters.
Well, my lord, I say it's not in the sense that the panel will have been aware of all those judgments being taken throughout the officer's report as to, as to the degree of consistency with the MPPF, and as a result, the degree of weight to be accorded. They will have understood that this is clearly not a binary matter. There are, in the case of seven-three, it perhaps could be said to be binary, because that's the ultimate judgment that's taken, but in relation to other policies, it's not. It's a grading scale. And against that context, the members would have understood it in that way, that it's a matter of planning judgment and a matter of advice rather than...
If you're putting it in the context of this report, that's different from the submission that you were making before, which is to the effect that planning committees can be taken to understand weight and issues of consistencies of policy.
Well, my lord, I say it's no more, I accept, I accept that, what your criticism, what I just said, but I say it's no more subtle, in a sense, than understanding green belt policy, which the courts have considered that lay panels are able to do. I mean, lay committees do have training in planning matters, they're not entirely lay in that sense, and they have experience of dealing with a number of applications on a day-to-day basis.
But anyway, here, I mean, leave aside the whole question of training and knowledge otherwise acquired, they're told time and time again what the statutory approach is.
Yes.
As you pointed out, so your first submission really, in a sense, supervenes your...
Is perhaps the more pertinent submission.
Nobody's suggesting, other than that they were well aware of the statutory test.
Yes.
Statutory obligation.
My lord, yes.
Right.
The other submission I make is another one found on, your lordship said, in Lee Valley, if I could just go back to that paragraph, which is at...
Paragraph thirty-one again.
Six, yeah, paragraph thirty-one. As it goes on, reasonably familiar with echo circle, that's something to do with that. "If criticism is directed at an officer's report as a means of attacking an authority's grant of planning permission, the question for the court will always be whether the officer's failed to guide the members sufficiently or has actually misled them on a matter essential to their decision. Where the officer's advice is founded on planning judgment, it will be unassailable unless demonstrated as a matter of law." And my lord, I rely on that in relation to the advice here, because the advice is a matter of planning judgment. The advice to accord, the advice as to the weight to accord to development plan policy or any other policy is a matter of planning judgment. And understood in that context, that advice, for the reason given by your lordship in that case, is, I say, unassailable. And just to reiterate the point in the Hopkins Homes case, at paragraph forty-seven, I think we called that tab nine, I think, haven't we?
Yes, the paragraph...
Paragraph forty-seven, page fifteen. And this is, you can see a slightly different context, it's not about consistency or otherwise, it's about the paragraph forty-nine and fourteen conundrum that troubled the courts for some time, but the third line down, "The weight to be given to such policies is not dictated by government policy in the MPPF, nor is it nor could it be fixed by the court," will vary for various, it will vary according to the circumstances, and then your lordship sets out the various circumstances in that context, in the context of that particular case. And then at the end, towards the end of the paragraph, three lines from the bottom, "This is not a matter of law, it is a matter of planning judgment." So we are dealing here with a matter of planning judgment for the officer in the first instance, and then for the committee in the second instance, to the extent they disagree or agree with the judgment of the officer.
Yes, but the case against you is that the officer's advice is to be read as precluding that exercise of planning judgment.
My lord, my lord, I understand, it happened to come onto my fourth submission from the authorities, which is how you, how they should be read. And my learned friend's friend places great weight on the word "can," "cannot," or "no weight can be given." And I just wanted to just draw your attention, your lordship's attention, to two points in the authorities before I make my submission in relation to that. The first is the ex parte Oxton Farms decision, which is at tab five. And between F and H on page one-one-one-zero, the second paragraph is, "Clear mindedness and clarity of expression are obviously important. However, that is not to say that a report is to be construed as if it were a statute, or that defects of presentation can often render a decision maker, sorry, a decision made following its submission to the council liable to be quashed. Overall fairness of report in the context of the statutory test must be considered." So in other words, defects in presentation cannot, do not, do not and cannot often render a decision liable to be quashed. And then just one other point from the authorities, the Mansell case, and this time, I just want to take not to your lordship's passage, but to the adoption of it and agreement with it by Sir Geoffrey Vose at page one-four-seven-four, paragraph sixty-two and sixty-three.
Right, and that's tab...
Sorry, tab four.
Right. Yes.
So agreeing with your lordship's judgment, adding a few more, a few words from a more general perspective. "In the course of the argument, one could have been forgiven for thinking that the contention that the presumption in favour of sustainable development in the MPPF had been misapplied in the planning officer's report turned on a minute legalistic dissection of that report. It cannot be overemphasised that such an approach is wrong and inappropriate. As has so often been said, planning decisions are to be made by the members of the planning committee advised by planning officers. In making their decisions, they must exercise their own planning judgment, and the court was given space to undertake that process. Appeals should not in future be mounted on the basis of a legalistic analysis of the different formulations adopted in a planning officer's report." And then it goes on to somewhere, it's more of your lordship's... Now, my lords, I rely on that, again, on the, against the background which I've already given in relation to the various formulations that the officer has adopted in expressing the weight to be accorded to policies by reference to consistency or otherwise. But I also rely on my learned friend's, Mr Kimballin's skeleton at paragraph sixteen, So my learned friend, Mr Kimballin says at sixteen, "The judge is driven down and changed the meaning of the clear words of the officer's report." Abs, and he gives the paragraph, "The judge translates, 'It is not considered that part A of this policy can be given any weight.'" Into, "In my professional judgment, having regard to the change in national policy, I would not give this part of this policy any weight." And that, of course, goes to the points that your lordships were discussing with my learned friend as to what really is the difference. And in my submission, the difference is really that narrow. It's put in a different way, in a similar way, by the judgment at paragraph one-five-three,
Yeah, paragraph...
Oh, sorry, not one-five-three, one-five-three is the reference back to it. It's, where is it?
One-two-five or thereabouts?
Yes, one-two-seven or thereabouts. Yes, I think it's one-two...
One-two-eight?
One-two-seven, yes.
Yeah.
And this is a point your lordship picked up earlier, that ground three, in essence, rests on the proposition that instead of writing "can be given any weight," "no weight or no weight can be given," the officer's report should have written "should not be given any weight" and "no weight should be given," respectively. And my lord, in essence, I agree with the judge below in relation to that point, that the, it's such a fine distinction, the language which my learned friend appears to consider would be acceptable in this context, and the language actually used, that it comes down to, akin to interpreting a statute or a statutory instrument, in looking at it in that fine, legalistic manner, particularly given the overall context which I've set out and the other ways in which the same issue is dealt with by the officer in the report. And the reason I refer to one-five-three just while we're here is, is that the learned judge below considers in the context of section thirty-one-two-A, that if those changes, those slight changes in wording have been made, is for that, he considers it highly likely that the result would have been the same, in the sense it wouldn't have made any material difference to...
Yes, but the section thirty-one-two-A consideration is to assume that the error had not been made.
My lord, my lord, I understand that. Oh, sorry to interrupt, but...
So that requires one to assume that ground one or ground two or both succeeded, and then the court is exercising its duty under section thirty-one-two-A. It is a duty.
My lord, yes, I...
It's not to revisit the rightness or wrongness of the inherent rightness or wrongness of the report, it is to assume that errors have been demonstrated.
My lord, yes, and of course, the judge there is assuming against himself that there is...
Well, that's what he should be doing.
No, no, no criticism at all, of course.
No, 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 but I'm not saying criticism or not, I'm simply saying that when one reads one-five-three, one has to be careful to remind oneself, I think, that the exercise here is to assume that the errors have been made good, have been demonstrated.
My lord, yes, I accept that, but I say there is to some, in some degree, an overlap between the exercise under ground one and section thirty-one-two-A in this, in this sense, in that, as your lordships makes clear in Mansell, for a error in officer's report to make good a ground in the first place, it has to be, first of all, it has to be misleading, and misleading in a material way. And a way of assessing some, perhaps, whether anything has been misleading in a material way, is to consider what the complainant is suggesting needs to be changed, and whether that is a material difference.
Of course, but I mean, ultimately, this case invokes the concept that words matter. They do. How much they matter in a particular context is what is being debated.
Yes.
One can postulate all kinds of circumstances. One could have a hundred-page report in which unfortunately the word "not" gets left out in an important sentence, but if you read related passages which either say the same thing or something very close, and you see the word "not" there, you stand back and you say, "Well, is this actually really a typographical error? If it is, does it, did it actually nevertheless make a difference?" And so forth. Didn't go corrected, wasn't corrected. Mr Kimballin's entitled to say that words matter.
Yes.
And that the degree of precision is required when one is dealing with a myriad of policy concepts, which the officer was here, actually. Do you say that the precision is there in substance?
My lord, yes, I don't, I don't, I don't, I say, just taken at its face, the words written and in their context, both in the terms of the context in the officer's report itself, and the context of the decision-making process by a planning committee, would have been understood to convey an opinion, professional opinion, as to weight to accord to a policy in light of national planning policy on consistency. There's absolutely nothing unlawful in a planning officer advising a committee in And there's nothing to suggest that the committee would have received that advice in any different way from the context in which it was given. There was no need, given that context, there was no need for it to be spelled out as a professional judgment explicitly. There was no need for the officer to say, "In my professional judgment, I would not give the policy any weight." There was, to do that would have burdened the report with that sentence throughout, and would have added significantly to the length of the report, because that was the entire context of what the report was intended to be.
Well, that's to go back to the use of the, deliberate use of the expression repetitively, "it is considered that, it is not considered that."
Yeah.
You say you have to read the report as a whole to gain its true tenor...
Yeah.
...and style, and place the disputed words in that context.
Fairly.
Fairly.
My lord, yes.
Not merely as a whole, but fairly as a whole.
My lord, yes. So my lords, there's only one other point on ground one, I think, before I move on to ground two. And this is a point that wasn't put in my learned friend's oral submissions, but my learned friend does rely on his skeleton as a whole, I thought I should just cover it off. It's paragraph eighteen of my learned friend's skeleton. it off, it's paragraph eighteen of my learning friend's skeleton. My learning friend says a paragraph eighteen, page nine, that the policies solely concerned with reworking, it's positive waste, supporting text makes that clear, directed to PFA deposits. In this instance, it's clear that the two criteria, A and B, are interlinked, and that the policy was designed with a link in mind, because the supporting text records, and he quotes, "In considering applications for the reworking material, there will be a need to balance the desire to encourage reuse of material and the impact that reworking of the material will have on the site and the surrounding area. It is therefore necessarily to establish that the proposal represents the best practical environmental option." He says though, "None of this was considered in the officer's report." My lord, I take issue with that, because if we go back to the officer's report, at paragraph six twenty. Paragraph seven point seventeen of the supporting text is dealt with at six twenty, and whilst it doesn't use the precise formulation of words, it has exactly the same effect, because it says, "It includes the need to balance encouraging reuse with the impact that reworking would have on the site and the surroundings." And so it should be demonstrated that the proposal was the best practicable environmental option available in the context of the policy's plan. And then goes on to discuss the weight to accord to that. But in my submission, I say there's nothing in paragraph eighteen of my learning friend's skeleton, because those words are effectively conveyed to members, the words of the supporting text.
As a matter of fact, were the relevant policy documents available to the members at the meeting?
My lord, can I just take instructions? My lords, I'm instructed that the coppers of the documents themselves are not actually available in the meeting, but so there is reliance placed on what's in the officer's report as to the effect of the policies.
Yes, I just wondered whether members could either physically or online have gone to the policies and looked at them if they'd wanted to remind themselves of what they said.
They can go online, I'm sure.
Right, thank you.
So my lords. In relation to alternatives and ground two, the first point to make is that the claimant and nobody else was suggesting that there was any better practicable environmental option, other than transport issues, which I'll come back to. And my lords, I understand your lordship made the point about best versus better, but of course for there to be a best environmental option that is not this one, there has to be one that's better.
Yes, logically, that's right.
And.
Well, that's completely contrary to the way in which you should use common sense in planning, because if you've got two options, you're right, one is, and one is better than the other, that is not the best option.
Not necessarily.
But everyone in a planning committee would just consider that the best option.
Well, yes, potentially.
I suspect even judges might, rather than getting into better and best.
Well, what's certainly the case for there to be a best, well, I'll repeat what I just said, for there to be a best environmental, practical, environmental option, which is not this one, there has to be an option that is better. Whether that other option is the best or not, well, there might be other better ones, but there has to be at least one that is better.
Yeah, but we should read, perhaps I've taken us down a false track, we have to look at what is the best practicable.
Yes.
Environmental.
Yes.
And that, I think, really supports what my lord is inviting you to consider.
Absolutely.
Because planning happens in the real world, not in some synthetic, parallel universe.
My lords, absolutely, and of course, the word, the acronym, the P in the acronym, is there for a reason. Best practicable environmental option means one that can actually be done, and one that's viable and cost-effective, and my learning friend accepts that matters of cost come into that. So just to be clear then, neither the claimant nor anyone else, or the appellant now, nor anyone else, was putting forward a better environment practicable, anything that even they were asserting was better, they were not even asserting that there was a better practicable environmental option, other than in relation to transport alternatives. And in relation to those transport alternatives, those were considered at paragraph seven point four one and seven point four two of the officer's report, at page fifty-nine, tab one. And it's clear that alternatives to road transport were considered and were in mind, there was a consideration of a pipeline conveyor, this is about two-thirds of the way down, seven point four one, canal barge or rail sidings. Those have been initially ruled out by the applicant because of the level of capital expenditure required, and together with lack of flexibility and general complexity at the current stage of the project, with no contracts having been signed and delivery destinations unknown, or whether an existing railhead or wharf already exists at the customer's location. So the practicability of those other potentially better environmental options was certainly considered and advised upon. But then you see at seven point four two, that the applicants committed further evaluating this as the future development goes on. Perhaps I'll just leave your lordships to read this paragraph.
One thing we haven't done actually, which we might have done or might still do, is to look at what the parish council was actually saying itself about these.
Yes. Well, we have the objections reported in the officer's report, but we also have the objections themselves.
We've got the, they had planning consultants.
Yes, they did.
Working for them.
And the objections themselves.
And they submitted what were called written representations, I think.
Tab ten.
Page two four seven.
Yeah, tab ten in the supplementary.
So what were they saying about alternatives actually?
Well, my lords, the short point is they weren't saying anything about alternatives in terms of alternatives to excavating this type of waste product or using an alternative agro-gut or anything like that. They were focusing on transport, to the extent they were talking about alternatives, they were focusing on transport. So you see four point three seven on page two six one. WPC, that's the parish council acknowledged that the applicant has considered using this need to a railway infrastructure during the development process for the application, and welcome the suggested condition, however, believe that this should be extended to include relevant rail authorities in line with policy. Furthermore, consider it should have beneficial to require the applicant to review transport after every five years of operation, in this condition, and viability of pumping the ashore impact at the power station for transportation.
They also had a concern about flooding, didn't they, of the road, I mean, best summarized at page twenty-two of the officer's report, four point four two. It was that there's going to be a lot more hard standing, therefore increased runoff, therefore flooding it on the road.
Yeah, my lord, could you just give me that paragraph?
Yes, of course, four point four two, page twenty-two. The officer fairly summarized the submission from four point three seven to four point four two.
Yes, the submissions were summarized, and in terms of the BPEO point, first of all, the council certainly weren't raising BPEO in terms.
Well, did they rely on criterion A of policy seven three? What were they saying about that?
My lords, my recollection of reading this is that they didn't rely on it at all in their objection.
Right. Well, I'm sure we'll be taken to it if they did.
This point about policy seven three A was not raised by the parish council or by anyone else at the time of determination.
And this consultancy advising them was a planning consultancy, was it a local consultancy? Britain to Linton, East Yorkshire?
Yeah. I'm not quite sure exactly how local they are. Yorkshire's a big county and.
No, I know Mr Booth is well aware of that.
East Yorkshire's not particularly close to North Yorkshire apparently, but it's not Devon.
Yes, I think that's also true.
But my lords, obviously one would expect, and indeed the expectation, any competent planning consultancy to consider the local plan and the relevant development plan policies, and they are relied on in certain respects, but they're certainly not a point taken in policy seven three.
Well, we're certainly not being critical of the parish council's planning consultants, we simply want to understand what was actually being said by them on behalf of the parish council about alternatives, and in what policy context it was being said.
Yeah. So unless I've missed something, and I'm sure I'll be told if I have, at the time of the determination, this was not at the forefront, certainly not in their mind of the planning consultancy advising the claimant, the then claimant, the then objector, parish council, and.
Perhaps you could just help me with something that's going through my mind. If you want to work out what the best practical environmental option is, you have to make a list of all the practical environmental options which exist, and then you have to rank them.
Yes.
And that's a process which obviously didn't happen in this case, and in the absence of that, the officer either has to say, you give that no weight, because it's not now required by national policy, or, I suppose the alternative gets pretty binary, it's fatal, because our policy requires it, and they haven't done it, and you can't form an opinion about it. Is that how it works, this sort of assessment?
Well, my lord, on your first point, well, on one of the points you just made, I say, once you decide to give it no weight, and if it's lawful for the officer to advise that and for the committee to adopt that formulation, then there can be no legal issue or lawful, yeah, criticism, criticism of the legality of what the council did in terms of not considering BPEO, if they've given it no weight, then it would be entirely rational for them not to go on to consider what is the best practical environmental option. If my learning friend gets somewhere with ground one, then we go on to consider whether it was a material omission to consider BPEO in terms. Now, one way of considering best practical environmental option would be, as your lordship says, to rank a number of options, and that would certainly be a rational way if there were a number of options. Here, there were not a number of options, other than the limited issue of transporting the material, there were no other options put forward. And also, it's worth just noting, in terms of the methodology, if you look at the policy itself in tab three of the supplementary bundle, which is where we have policy seven three at one three seven, but other supporting text at one three five, paragraph two point nine, government's overall policy aims to increase the proportion of waste managed by the officer from the top of the waste hierarchy, whilst this is an overall policy aim, hierarchy acts as a guide and is not prescriptive, the strategy recognizes that for individual waste streams, the choice of waste management options will be guided by the principle of best practical environmental option. The BPO is the outcome of a decision-making procedure which emphasizes the protection and conservation of the environment. It is the option that provides the most benefit or least damage to the environment at acceptable cost in the long term as well as the short term. So it's the outcome of that decision-making procedure which emphasizes the protection and conservation of the environment. Now here, there's no, my learning friend isn't suggesting, as I understand it, that the report or the decision has gone wrong in any way in terms of its emphasis of the protection and conservation of the environment, and considering the proposal in that context alongside all the relevant environmental considerations. And my learning friend is also not putting forward, and did not, importantly, did not put forward at the application's stage, any other option which it asserted was better in terms of protecting and conserving the environment, save for the transport points, which were duly considered, both in the officer's report and in the meeting, we can see that in the minutes that they were particularly focused on and considered in the meeting. So in terms of whether this, whether ground two can be made out, I say, simply given the absence and the paucity of lines of inquiry, which I think is the phrase used by the Court of Appeal in Horner, the paucity of the lines of inquiry which would have been available to the committee, had they considered that more weight should be placed on this aspect of the policy, they just simply wouldn't, it was not material to the outcome.
There's another aspect, I suppose, I don't know whether it takes us anywhere, and that is EIA, was an environmental statement prepared under the EIA regulations, after a scoping opinion had initially been prepared. Did alternatives feature in the environmental statement?
My, yes, my understanding is, and I'm sure my learning friend was to briefly elaborate more further on this, but there is an extract, I think, from the environmental statement. Yes, the last page of the bundle, the supplementary bundle, page three one one, where there was a consideration of alternatives expressly set out, including the do-nothing alternative, which in any event, that do-nothing alternative was obviously the baseline against which the whole planning application was being considered, and then some reference to alternative locations.
Was this referred to in the officer's report? Three, two.
I'm ready, yes, page seven, paragraph three point two, the environmental statement, whether it refers to the consideration of alternatives.
Seven, one, four, one, mate.
Yeah. Seven, one point one is.
What?
Seven point one, four, one is also referred to in my skeleton, I'm not sure that, is that a bit of environmental statement, not environmental statements. There is further reference to alternatives at seven point one, on page eighty-five.
Well, that takes us back to seven, three.
Seven, three, and seven, six, and seven, seven, where the alternative, alternatives more generally than transport are considered, for example, you'll see in, let me see it, seven point, there is something where it says it.
Strikes me, Miss Wiggie, that this might be the point on which you'd. Strikes me, Miss Wiggie, that this might be the point on which you'd wish to reflect and return to it.
It's just turned 1 o'clock.
2 o'clock.
Oh, 2, 1 o'clock.
Well, it's 1 o'clock now, you might like to return to it at 2 o'clock.
Yes.
If I ask you to return to it at 1 o'clock, that would be now.
I'm grateful, that, that would be very helpful.
So if that would be convenient to all, we shall resume at 2 o'clock, thank you.
My lord, may I say that I've, I think I have circulated by email the three authorities that have been referred to this morning, which we didn't have, they, they should be on the email.
Thank you very much for that, 2 o'clock.